I can never understand what people here are talking.
What about for recording or what?
They are single today. They are, but we are.
Yeah, they're not very good. People can't really hear.
Yeah, we're gonna be on the radio.
Good.
Probably. Probably.
What's your name?
Mike. Michael.
You're in charge of the meeting?
Uh, I work. I'm charged, but I work it.
Cause you see when I was talking to the technology highway. I always call one twenty. One twenty.
Oh, that's right.
We're gonna get together soon. We're gonna have a little.
Yeah, I love it. Did you live out there?
She worked there. She worked with the.
Did she drive from? Oh, okay, yeah. I call them labbers. Those big boys, I call them labbers. That's horrible. He's here.
Terry something?
No, he's not.
Well, it is, I mean, it is, it is time to do our exchange money. So, uh, you know, theoretically, after we've been done, I would like one of them. Well, they did, well, part of the family, um, uh, they, part of the family moved to Los Angeles. And they stay in, so, I want to place where I was born, uh, in sixty-third, you know, in that.
Hello.
Howdy, how are you?
Oh, wow.
We just sailed sixteen ninety-two. But everything, everything is from that. They all finished one month. They all have some serious. Or they have some killers.
Where are we taking? Where do they come from?
How you doing?
I would, I'd sooner speak a couple times here than if I was a blessing.
Before we get started onto the agenda, one of our members, Bob Frazekin, is asked to have a moment to address us and the audience. If you would, please give him the attention.
Thank you.
Very well.
I want to apologize for my, uh, my temperate behavior. I want to apologize for my temperate behavior at our last meeting. Frankly, I was shocked that the sheds were approved by this committee. Approved by the zoning office after we had rejected it without prejudice. I don't think that was proper, and I guess I got upset when this occurred. So I want to apologize to the committee and to the people that are here.
Thank you very much, Bob. And I would like to take just a moment to say something.
I'm just here to listen.
You all have known what went on here in the county the past couple months. And we lost a dear neighbor, a committee member, and just a good friend in the county. And whether you lined up with what John Neal thought or what his opinion was, you could not say that he didn't love this county, and he served it well. And I think he left an example for us as members of the planning commission and borders zoning appeals to, uh, to follow in the vote in our time and our effort into doing a good job. But at the same time, uh, he's gone, and his family is still dealing with that. So, uh, I just ask you to remember them in your prayers. Everybody knows when you lose a loved one, the first week or so, it's, you're flooded with love and care and words and gifts and, you know, a month or two after that, everybody's back to normal, except the family who's lost a loved one. So keep them in your prayers, and if you see them out or get an opportunity to encourage them, and just let them know you appreciate all the effort that he put into this county. And with that, we'll have a moment of silence. I'm gonna lead us in prayer. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just thanking you for loving us, thanking you for blessing us with such a beautiful day, dear God. And thank you for blessing us to, to live in a part of the country and a part of the state, dear God, that we get to live in each and every day. And dear God, I believe wholeheartedly that, uh, the citizens that are here and the members of the zoning board and the planning commission, dear God, I believe that we all have a love and appreciation for Jefferson County. And I think we all, dear God, have what we believe to be its best interest in mind. We have different opinions, dear God, sometimes, but I just pray that you would guide this group tonight as we look at some of the issues that we have. And just help us to, to work together to come to solutions that would be pleasing to you, dear God, but would be beneficial to the, the most affluent and the most impoverished we have in the county, dear God. We love you for everything, most of all, we love you and we thank you for your son Jesus Christ and what he did on the cross. And we ask these things and give you thanks in his name. Amen. Let's talk. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregotten, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the time. Am I hard to hear? A little, would you like to move it down a little bit closer and stuff, because there's a bad echo up here with my microphone on. So if you, if you're having issues here, maybe just come on down and hold it front. Sorry, Bob. I picked up on yours.
That's, that's all right.
Okay, uh, you received in your packet a copy, a copy of the minutes from the previous month's reading. And, uh, if you had a opportunity to look those over, and if we don't have any, uh, changes or corrections to those, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Talk to voters, Thomas Sack. Although, is there any discussion about that? If convening that, all over the paper, let it be known by saying aye. All of the vote, votes passed. Citizens input. Is there anything you can, or where it often? And again, as I get started on these, uh, we ask that when you fill these out, that you mark on the front whether this is pertaining to planning or the borders zoning appeal. We'll have the borders zoning appeals meeting first, and we will accept that citizen's input there if it's an agenda item. If it's not an agenda item, you will still have an opportunity to speak, but it will be at the end of all other business for the borders zoning appeals, okay? If you're here for planning, same, same thing, except if it's an agenda item, you can speak at the start, and we'll, we'll give ample time for you to speak. If it's not an agenda item, we'll ask that you state on the end of all other business, and then you will have the vote, okay? That's the planning commission. I've got, um, William Fellers. May I ask if that's from?
Planting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fellers. Okay, I've got a rezoning for a Deborah Epps. Is Deborah Wood, is Deborah, if you would, come forward? Is, is planting? Okay. Pardon me, that's planting, Deborah, I'm terribly sorry. I did not see it marked on there. Yes, it is. Do we have a Claude Allen?
Yes, sir.
Is your borders zoning appeal the plan?
It's, uh, I think it's zoning because it's, uh, twenty-six and truck lot on Phillips Road.
That is BZA, so if you would come forward and you can have the microphone, please, uh, you can state your full name and your address if you don't mind.
Yes, my name is Claude Allen. I live at eight oh three Kettner Road in White Prime. And I have recently been made aware that there are plans for, uh, I don't know what you call it, an overnight truck lot, uh, rest stop, truck stop, whatever, on Phillips Road. My concerns are twofold regarding this project. And I, believe me, I, I believe in keeping our roads safe and the truckers getting the rest that they need. That's not the issue here. The issue here is the current zoning for that piece of property. I think it's about four or five acres in there that's zone C two. And I believe that a condition for this lot should be that it needs to be on a state road as opposed to a county road. And I would point out to the county that I think by the time you completely redo a mile of road, it costs this county about a million bucks. Okay? So I just, I just wanted to make that point, uh, cost to maintain it. The rest of that property is owned agricultural, and so for that to be approved for that use, uh, all of that agricultural would have to go in big rezon. I just wondered if that could actually happen. These are just things that I wanted to say to the BZA group for you to consider when everything gets talked, spoken about or the top, this topic comes up. There's a farm that is for sale at the end of Phillips Road where it joins Spring Creek. And if that farm gets developed, it's gonna look like the projects, or the, I'm not insinuating it's a project, but the homes are gonna go in there, probably eight to ten to an acre. And Phillips Road is gonna become a very, very busy road. And I don't think right now that two semis could pass on that road without slapping mirrors. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts on this, and these are some thoughts from some of the other neighbors as well regarding this project.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, Mr.
May you have some questions, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
You said there were a number of houses that were going to be.
I said, what I said is if that farm gets sold and gets developed, it's gonna become a very, very, that farm's still for sale. No one has bought it yet. But if it's sold and it's, it's got a developer price on it, that's what's gonna happen.
Okay.
You're not humble with it.
Okay, that's all the citizens input. We have the borders zoning appeals and next item on the agenda, the item number six, determination if an eighteen wheeler tractor trailer park rest stop is allowed in C two general commercial. Sir, sir. Anyone here to speak on that? Okay.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Doing well, sir, thank you.
Good.
Okay, if you would, sir, whenever you're ready, you talk to us about what you got and what you'd like to ask.
All right. Well, so from the questions last time, um, I went through and I answered those. And one of the, the first question was length of stay. It's gonna be around one night, one night stay, and, um, we're thinking that they're gonna make up about, like, as far as overnight stays, probably about a quarter to half of what we were thinking. And we, we did do that change as far as how many parking spaces that we had talked about, and we did change that to a hundred and third. And the other three quarter to other half will be monthly storage, people that will pay to have their, their rigs parked. Basically have them, uh, have a place for them to stay. You know, whenever they're home, they can actually park their rig instead of being in a subdivision. That's kind of more of our focus instead of the overnight, but that's gonna be some of it too, is the overnight. And then the, um, the security provided, you know, as far as the, there's a six foot fence all the way around it, uh, twenty-four hour video surveillance and onsite, um, management. And then, uh, will patrons occupy the cab of the truck overnight? Yes, for the customers that stay one night. For the monthly customers that just rent a spot to keep their truck? No. And then, are retail sales provided? No. We have talked about some vending machines. That would be about as far as we would get into that. And then, uh, will the diesel engines run overnight? Uh, I would say yes for the customers that will stay there, but it'll be on a clean idle. Cause all of them are supposed to be clean idled as far as if they're on the road. And then, identify other services to be provided. Showers, restrooms, and a lounge area for those that decide to stay overnight. And, uh, will there be a check-in facility? No, it'll probably be all done over app. And then, um, the plan's really not looking right as far as the property viewer and all that stuff we've kind of talked about the last time. As far as if we do get the approval to move forward, then we'll rezone everything and we'll get everything, you know? I'm sure we'll have to have, like, SWIP, cause we'll be filling in and bringing some land up, so there'll be a lot of other moving parts to it, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions that'll come up. I did meet with Joe at the highway department, and, um, we determined that the highway is, uh, is a highway spec. So as far as the actual structure of the road, it is supposed to be spec correctly. The only problem is, is the width. Now, at where the old motel is, is, is good. So basically from the old motel down to where my property, where the inner end, it starts from about a foot to three foot that I can add on. And the highway, uh, Joe would inspect it, and, you know, we would pay for it all to be expanded out and, you know, make the, the width big enough.
Do you have an exact distance from that old hotel down to your entrance?
About a thousand feet.
I ask you what the exact distance was from the old hotel to the entrance to this building?
About a thousand feet.
About a thousand feet.
That is all of the prepared answers that I have as far as from you guys' questions.
A question I have, Mr. Bowen, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump with it. Roughly a hundred and thirty spots, correct?
Correct.
Do you have an idea of how, is that gonna be on a first come, first served basis? Will there be so many of those allotted for an overnight stay?
Yes, there'll be so many of those allotted for that. So we had talked about like a quarter to half. Basically, you know, cause I know you guys had concerns about them being there overnight and all of that. So I'm trying to fit in the box that you guys want me to be in. So if, if you feel like the quarter of that for staying overnight would be okay, then that's what we'll go with. And then purpose the rest of it out for, um, monthly storage.
Is there a creek in front of that property?
There is a creek beside it. Yes, sir.
Uh, what are you gonna do with that creek?
The creek will be there. There's actually be a berm. Our plan obviously is not in there, but, so about twenty feet away from the creek side, there'll be a berm that is built to keep everything away. So we will, we'll be, you know, whatever stipulations that the state says, or even once we're in planning, you know, then we'll stay that far away from it. I'm sure we're gonna talk about, uh, storm drainage and lots of other things too. I know there's a lot of questions that need to be answered on this, and basically, we're just trying to figure out, can we move forward? Any other questions?
If we have anything else to add.
Does a hotel motel tax come into play here? Since it's an overnight stay?
Sure, terminal.
That's another issue.
Yeah.
We can make it though.
I wouldn't. I'm gonna answer, I'm not a hundred percent certain on that, but it would definitely be something to look in. If this is allowed, I would move, move forward with that. But that's, that's a good question, Tom. Really good question. Anyone else? Tom, Mr. Carter?
I would just suggest, if I hadn't heard anything, you made comments about showers and aisles.
Yes. We need to talk once we, once we get a little bit further down the. We need to talk once we, once we get a little bit further down the pipe when we're going into planning, is that correct? That's kind of what you talked about last time.
I would think you need to see us first to determine if we're gonna have areas that have showers now without your parking and everything else.
Right.
With that big parking areas in my, little bit of knowledge of stormwater, there'll be quite a bit of excavator going on there for that. And so I don't know about your limitations as far as putting in your area for a second.
Right.
And then we need to kind of give you an idea of what it did go for, Tom, is make a determination. Are you specifically saying there's only gonna be 24 overnight that's gonna be used in the city? Then you've got, say, another 100 or so vacant people coming in there and part of their truck. We'd have to look at how many of those people will be using the restroom before they came or left, or possibly even taking a shower.
Okay.
So, you know, it's gonna be quite a bit of area that's gonna have to be used for a second.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
If you don't have sanitary, so that would be, to me, was the first thing you need to be looking at before you consider going on with that going for a year or not.
Okay.
I give you the bad news up front.
Well, that's why I'm here. So I get all the bad news up front.
And to piggyback what Mr. Carter said, you know, if he deemed that you needed more than what you have currently allowed for, thought you were going out for, are you comfortable with losing a couple of those 130 lots to accommodate that?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's why we're here, so we can...
Yeah, absolutely. Talk about it.
Yeah.
Chris Baldwin, do you have any questions or has he answered?
I mean, he's addressed my question, this still sounds like it's a little fuzzy casey. And I guess one thing we see being industrial, I mean, this strikes at an industrial site as opposed to commercial. I think, I think we've seen two areas being retail services and this does not seem to be that. I also spoke with a official with TDOT and just asked him, not because he's, he deals a lot with the roads in this area, he works out of the Strawberry Plains area. And he had heard this use before, in fact, I called a couple of friends to ask them...
I'm supposed to turn this on?
I'm gonna turn that off.
See, if they had heard of this use, and this is, not that this is a bad thing, maybe it's an emerging land use that people are, just are not familiar with. I don't know. But there, no one else I spoke with could identify a use of this nature with the exception of the guy from TDOT. And where the, apparently years ago, where the salt facility is on 81, it's just a couple of miles off the road, that used to be an overnight truck station. It was just parking. And between the calls to the sheriff and the garbage and other issues, they had to close it. And it is now where they store their salt. That gave me pause.
In what year did it close?
I really don't know.
I think it's proven information because I believe the entire group here would say that sanitary has definitely improved since, you know, the late 70s, early 80s for all places. And we're a lot more aware of our trash and how that has to be dealt with. So, I think using out-of-date information on something like that, it isn't really a fair place to be with that being a reason for it to not be allowed. I do see the concern for it.
You know, I committed that I would ask TDOT.
Yes.
And I did, and that was their response.
Absolutely.
Now, it was not TDOT's official response, it was an individual who...
Absolutely.
Who currently works for them out of the Strawberry Plains office. And I really don't, you know, again, aside from like diesel engines running overnight, that can get really loud collectively. It also has, you know, whether you like or not, it has air quality issues, if you do have residential development around there. I think that this will predispose the property around of what might the property be used for. But now, you've got, I mean, I'm just sitting here looking at Tennessee Viewer, you've got a lot of truck facilities around there.
Absolutely. In 1,500 feet, you've probably got a couple of lots that are privately owned where the exact same thing's taking place, correct? 1,500, 2,000 feet from that location?
Correct.
Okay.
And you've got one major one, I think this is a major trucking facility.
And they're all just slap full.
Yeah.
And the interstate, when you drive, when you drive through there, I mean, from when it turns over to 81, on to past 12 is just bogged down with trucks and, at night. It's nuts. So I know this is kind of an out-of-the-box business idea for sure. And we'll see how it works, I guess, if you guys deem it.
Okay. And you answered the question, Ms. Baldwin, and I'm certain, I just overlooked it, about security, there will be someone on-site, correct?
Yes.
24/7?
24/7.
And again, we're not looking tonight at the particulars of the lots.
Yours is allowed to be used.
If that use is allowable there. And it's likened to fairly adjacent property, close to it, so.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions, concerns?
We can't make a decision until Tom...
Well, we can make a decision tonight if that particular use is allowed in this, but Tom would have to give him the go-ahead as far as to the scope of what he could do with the property, once we say it's allowable there.
I've got a lot of other hoops to jump through, I know.
Yeah, absolutely.
100%.
Yeah. Tom, you got anything else? Steph? Any other question? Hey, what's pleasure, board? And again, we are looking at determining if an 18-wheeler tractor-trailer parking rest stop is allowed in the C2 zone.
Are we gonna vote on this?
Yes, yeah. We're not voting on his particular, we're just voting on that particular use allowed in that zone. Because that's what that property is zoned there.
Okay.
Okay.
What do you think, Catherine? I'd like to hear it. Would you vote for it?
Well, now that, she, she, no, she can offer, she can answer those questions for us, but she cannot steer our vote.
[laughing]
She cannot tell you how to vote.
Could I ask one question? Pilot and all those, what are they classified as?
Those are in the cities.
Those are in the city.
Let me ask, what about Deep Springs?
They are C2.
They are C2?
C2 on Deep Springs.
On Deep Springs. You've got Love and...
Speedway.
Speedway.
And the new...
And the new one that's coming just across the interstate on Douglas Lake side. So we currently have those in this zone in the county outside of city limits.
Correct.
Okay. So that's a very good question, a good piece of information. Thank you, Steph. So, with that other information, do we have any more questions?
How can you compare this to...
Pardon me, sir. It's, yeah, we give you your time, thank you very much.
You may.
So what would the pleasure of the board be? I'll entertain a motion.
Please define the issue again. I'll make a motion if I know what it is. I'm making a motion on.
Okay. I'll read it one more time. We are determining if an 18-wheeler slash tractor-trailer parking rest stop is allowed in the C2 zone, general commercial. And we're not just looking at his C2 zone, we're looking at the county-wide C2 zone. And it's already established in the C2 zone in other areas.
Truck stops.
Okay. The truck stop that they have is overnight parking there for those, and they actually have rental when their folks pull in and leave, go home for a few days. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Frisag?
I've read Catherine's analysis, I don't think it's a good idea. I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, well, it's, don't share your vote till we have a motion.
Well, I'm gonna review it right now.
Okay, but we, we need to do things in proper procedure.
Okay.
Okay.
What kind of a motion are you looking for?
A motion to approve or deny.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so you make a motion to approve.
Right.
At his allow.
So we can discuss it, right.
C2, I have proper motion, Mr. Frisag has made that, do I have a second?
Second.
Tommy second? Okay, it's open for discussion now. Any questions, any comments?
Well, we're ready to discuss the...
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I, I went to Phillips Road, I ran into a sheriff deputy on the way to look at this property. And I practically could reach out and touch the sheriff deputy's hand because I have a truck and it is a very, very narrow road, it's dangerous. I think it's not a proper place to put this kind of facility. There are other facilities off US 40 that would lend itself to this kind of facility. I just don't believe that it belongs in this particular area off Phillips Road. I'm voting against it.
Okay. Again, I don't want it to appear that I'm trying to steer the direction of the conversation. The issue you spoke to specifically was something that he has discussed with the county highway department. And there was a solution to that, put it into play, so that regressed the close proximity.
Yeah, right.
And again, I want to continue to echo the fact that there is C2 in the county that has similar, very similar businesses already in it. Okay? So, any other questions or discussions?
If it's already allowed, then...
It has been allowed. Not one that doesn't have fuel available and stuff, but there is overnight parking and also fuel and food sold in this area and stuff.
On the county road.
On the county road. And that's, you know, that's what we've got to look at, are we gonna be fair across the board? Are we gonna try to spot this? And I like it here, but I don't like it there, but you're zoned the same, I don't know how we can go about that. Is there any more discussion? Being none, all those in favor of allowing 18-wheeler tractor-trailer parking lot rest stops in C2, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Three to one. Now, you've got some work to do.
Yeah, no kidding. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item number seven, a variance request of 15 feet on the front setback on Lot 22, Dandridge Landing, 1515 David Swan Drive. James and Sally Lewicki?
You also have a copy of this in your packet. This is the builder, and this property is right next to the property that reached out there and it's on Danny Avenue. So it was like Lot 21 and this is Lot 22.
Yes, I'm Bob Carter. I'm the builder.
Okay. And even though you draw it up that it might fit on there, it's still so tight, especially with the fill line and septic tank and things like that so close to it. And the words add, I need the variance to scoot up so we can make it look right.
Stephanie, again, you say it's very similar to the variance that we had last month, month before last January.
Yes. We've done all the variance on that property along that road.
It's very tight.
I'll make a comment on that, the reason he moved there because I wouldn't laugh, I wouldn't have killed his son.
Okay. If we grant the variance, your piece of everything after that?
If they don't mess it up.
Is anybody any questions on this? Everyone understand what he's asking for and why? Okay. What's pleasure of the board? Did you have any comment, Catherine? No, you get it. I didn't think.
I make a motion to grant the variance.
Okay, we have a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Any further discussion? Being none, all of those in favor of granting the variance, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom, keep an eye on it. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number eight, variance request for a garage to be placed at the front of the property on 1819 Parrish Chapel Road, severable by Meta Ann and Richard. Americas. We'll go right ahead and speak to what y'all are doing.
So we're applying for the variance to put up a garage, because it's really the only location that's available to us on the property. We did submit a survey map. The only thing the survey doesn't show is the slope, but the highlighted box is what we're looking to do. The setbacks are all proper.
Within code.
Right, within the code. It's, and the only other number that I didn't put on there is the garage would be 105 feet from the house to the side of the house, but it is set in front of the house, in the corner of the curve of the road.
And where the garage sits, it's probably six or seven feet lower than the surface of the road, so it's not like it'll be a giant...
And it is already cleared and he laser leveled it, it's pretty, it's pretty level, just a little slight...
Just gotta dig out a couple of feet, that's it.
And we would be going with Nathan, his last name, Nathan Thurman, who is local and has already, you know, made some phone calls to us so that we could make sure to do everything properly.
Stephanie, you got any concern?
No, it's just one of those that what a property lays and no other place to put it.
And we've planted several variances like that throughout the county. Catherine, do you have any concern on this one? Anybody else have a question or anything? Okay, being none, I will entertain a motion.
I don't like that motion.
Okay, Bobby is making a motion to grant the variance.
Yes.
Okay. Tommy second's motion, any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor of granting the variance for the placement of the garage, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, is a variance request for the size and height on a proposed billboard sign off of Cook Road, Dandridge, by Wesley Sisk. Mr. Sisk here?
And he knew it, he sent me the information, so I sent it, he knew it was the law's meaning.
Okay. So he was aware and we had several questions on that, so... And I'm asking parliamentarily here, can we deny that because of no representation? Without prejudice, yeah, for that. Okay. I'll entertain that, I will entertain a motion?
Most of the nine without prejudice.
Okay, that does require a second, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor of denying without prejudice article or item number nine on the agenda, let me know by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion, lots of seconds, so. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. BZA is adjourned. Let's see, we got Austin, and we'll give Andy a second, get back in here with us. Give him just a minute here. Where are you from, Randy, which one are you from? Oh, okay, one of the, one of the big ones. You know this guy over there? If you don't mind, I'm only a little few. Kyle, the meeting of the Planning Commission to order, as we spoke at the opening of Border Zoning Appeals, you know, there was a void created in the passing of Brother John Nail. And with that, we have Mr. Randy Bales here with us, and he's going to be filling that spot, so Randy's a, I think we've got a good person here, level-headed, and he serves the county in several other ways as well, so we're, we're thankful we've got him. And thank you for taking time for us. That being said, we'll move on down that agenda. Two, the minutes, again, they came in your packet, you've had the opportunity to look at those, is there any corrections or amendments? Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Bob seconded that, any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as read, let it be known by saying aye, or as wrote, I should have said. And we're to the part of citizens' input and agenda items again, so. I'm going to take it back from the top, Deborah Epps is on property off Black Road, and that is definitely on the agenda.
My name's Deborah Epps, I live at seventeen fifty Ambrose Lane, which is just off Black Road. One of the things that I'd like to speak to real quickly is, we have someone coming in there, we've been told to put in a storage unit, and they're wanting to go from A one to the C two zoning. We were just speaking to the C two, and I understand that that's also where the truck stops are put in, can be put in. I personally worked with our local sheriff, the sheriff, I've worked with T-Dod, I have worked with the head of State Patrol, Tennessee and Nashville, I've talked to our congressman here, I also have worked with the Department of Homeland Security. These truck stops are not good for any kind of residential area.
Okay, ma'am, are you speaking to, to the truck stops or to?
Just probably, because they're wanting to zone this C two, which is my understanding that there are many opportunities for this piece of property if it gets passed to be zoned as C two.
Yes, ma'am.
With these truck drivers, and it's a storage facility, it's my understanding that they have a commercial business. I don't know what Mr. Mullins actually does in his business, I don't know if it's excavation or whatever. Couple of years ago, when the property was bought, he asked if it'd be, would he be able to do a storage facility there and build some housing? He was told no, because it's a residential area. This property has been used for commercial flooring ever since he has been there, and nobody has stopped it. There are huge pieces of equipment that have been left there, never moved in the entire time that he's been there. There's been backhoes, there's been tractor-trailer trucks, there's been bulldozers, there's been log haulers, dump trucks. And like I said, several pieces of this equipment's never moved, he has used this for storage this entire time. So we noticed that there was a small rezoning sign put out there on Deep Springs Road. Pushed up into the corner, and it's by an entrance to his piece of property that he's not currently using. The entrance to his property is on Black Road. One of my questions is, why was a rezoning sign not put on Black Road where all the residences are? For people to see that there's a zoning meeting coming up to rezone that property from A one to C two. It needs to be.
We typically don't ask for questions during citizens' input, but I will.
Just a note about the sign, it's, it's what I'm questioning. And that entrance is a double extremely high chain link fence. The second question is, is a C two the only thing that he can be granted to use that property just for a storage facility? Is there something that doesn't give him full advantage? I mean, there's all kinds of things that fall under C two. And if you're in a residential area, I don't think that's right to give somebody access that they can come back and say, well, this property can be used for this. A third thing that I have to, to question is, this is going to decrease the value of our property. We have a fairly large property, we have a four thousand square foot long home on forty acres of land. It's just less than half a mile from where this property is located on Black Road. We've actually had an inquiry made from a country western singer wanting that property, we weren't ready to sell. I don't think these people, when you've got this kind of property sitting there, are going to be that anxious to look at a piece of property that's going to be sitting right next to something like this. Another issue is wear and tear on the roadways. Is this road built to withstand heavy equipment being on it? We've tried over five years to get the small little short road back to our home paved, and we're told there's no money for paving. All they do is patch it two more, three more years, is what I was told the other day, before they can pave that road, because there's no money. Who's going to maintain the roads that this heavy equipment is going to mess up? So that's a big concern. And then I guess the last thing was, is this considered a high-traffic area, which it sounds to me like C two properties need to be in high, high-traffic areas? Don't know that I would consider that being a high-traffic area. You know, I'd like to know the vehicle, vehicle count on that road, and then also, what does this group consider a high-traffic area for that type of facility to be placed? There is currently a light on that property. It's a horrible light, the candle power on it is unbelievable. You can actually spot that light, it grabs your eye when you're around on the dump on Deep Springs Road. And I'm sure the people across the street are having it affect their property. It is considered a commercial lighting, and I know that there's no issue, nothing in writing that you all have as far as being able to judge what a lighting system should be, but that's, that's not residential lighting, it's commercial lighting that he has there now, and has been using the entire time. But my concern over the C two is the amount of garbage that comes from these truck drivers. I don't know if this will be just his group driving this equipment, or if he's going to put something in there that he can store vehicles and trucks or whatever for any other person or business. This is gross, but I have seen men urinating beside their trucks on the side of the road. And they just shake their fist at you if you try to take a picture to show the garbage they're throwing out their window. And when I talked to the sheriff, he said, I don't send, because I asked him if we could just form a community group that would go out there and keep our ramps and roadways clear in those areas where these three truck stops are at this exit. I was told no, because it's too dangerous. I don't even send one car. If I get a call, or my guys check, and somebody needs to be ticketed or whatever in those areas, he said, I send two cars, because they are dangerous, they have been threatened. So I just want to make you guys aware, if this is C two, and you're allowing this to come in residential areas, please check, because this is not good.
Basically, I hate to, to stop you there, but you've been speaking for about seven minutes, we typically.
I know, three minutes, I understand, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, thank you for your input, ma'am.
Sure.
Okay, William Billers?
I'm Bill Billers, twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, and I'm speaking for my family and concerned residents about RPC's subdivision approval authority. At the January twenty-eighth meeting, RPC instructed the interim director's zoning department to bring the resolution and everything to the February twenty-fifth RPC to confirm that signing authority was delegated outside the RPC to staff for one- to two-lot subdivisions. We want to see documents confirmed tonight if possible, since the February twenty-fifth meeting was canceled. Unless Jefferson County does not have to follow Tennessee State Code Title thirteen, Chapter three, Art four, thirteen dash three dash forty, authority transfer must include a public notice with other meeting agenda topics and RPC majority vote at the public meeting, and a public documentation of the RPC decision with decisions of other matters. RPC's records from late nineteen nineties to January twenty-twenty-two were searched, but signing authority delegation was not found. Jefferson County Subdivision Codes, two thousand and four, do not document delegation of signing authority. Absent proof of delegated authority, Jefferson County Subdivision regs, Article five, C one and three, and Tennessee Code state, a misdemeanor was committed by filing the latest Forest Glen subdivision plat map without RPC approval. Any building or structure violating the subdivision regulations shall be deemed an unlawful building or structure. Without a Jefferson County or Tennessee Code compliant plat approval, the owner of the sheds of twenty-two fifty-one Jim Henry Road should be notified to stop work and submit a plat approval for RPC approval. Whomever approved the sheds plat changes in secret is not qualified to be in a county zoning decision-making position. It would be career-ending for even junior managers in good corporations to approve a highly contentious matter without thorough, prior, transparent discussions with all stakeholders. Jefferson County's handling the sheds since May twenty-twenty-four smells a little bad here. A Jefferson County official statement, residents, that sheds are approved, just move on, was inappropriate, especially, especially with possible state code violations and even county violations. Shed examples, how can a one- to two-lot land division be approved for three separate buildings with A one zoning only allowing one resident per lot? Maybe there's a way. Why do our codes allow a subdivision within a subdivision, or do they? What would stop a contractor from getting a second, third, one- to two-lot approval in secret? The sheds issue continues.
Surely for that item is only agenda, the truth being about.
What do you mean that? It's, it's the whole approval thing, it's number D.
Number D, yeah. They resolution amended his other resolution, Jefferson County regarding C three zone, wholesale warehouse, commercial business.
Which F? Oh, I guess I got, I guess I got it wrong, is it F?
Discussion of private out plat surveys should come to the planning commission.
That's it, sorry, I got the wrong letter. Evidently it was published wrong. It's right here in the newspaper. That's the only source we have, because it's not been showing up on the web timely.
Go ahead, sir, pardon me for interrupting.
No, that's, I understand. Shed examples, how can, I already did the first one. Why do our codes allow a subdivision within a subdivision, or do they really allow that? What would stop a contractor from getting a second, third, et cetera, one- to two-lot subdivision in secret after the first one's approved? The sheds issue continues to be a big county mess in the eyes of many residents. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Billers, pardon me for interrupting.
No.
That's all right.
Next, we have Kathleen Billers. RPC agenda, or agenda item D.
It's actually F.
Okay.
So.
Same newspaper.
Yeah, same, this was done, yeah.
It was on February's, yeah. D on February's.
Okay, it was D on February's agenda, and where did that come from? I think it's Mr. Billers, and F, and F on this one.
Kathleen Billers, twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, good evening. Speaking about item F on the agenda, the sheds were denied without prejudice by the RPC in November twenty-four. Instead of Grace coming back before the RPC, the sheds were approved in-house in December two thousand and twenty-four. Many citizens were shocked, angry, feel this was done secretly. Grace's request was for a two-lot subdivision with a building permit that changed two sheds to a single residential home with sixty-six hundred plus square feet, eight bedrooms, and two separate four-bedroom septic fields. A key question, did zoning staff have the authority to approve this? Zoning staff signed off on the plat on the line designated for the RPC secretary, saying it is just the way it has always been done. The following excerpts are from the Tennessee, or State of Tennessee Code and Jefferson County subdivision regs indicating zoning may not have had that authority to approve. Specifically, an RPC may, the RPC may delegate responsibility for approval of a subdivision plat to staff by a majority vote taken at a public meeting after being placed on the RPC's meeting agenda and notice being required as provided. I tried to get the answer that this was actually approved, but was told my request exceeded time limits of available county staff. So instead, I went to the Carson Newman University and searched using a digital database, and found, searching, that there were no RPC public meetings where delegation of responsibility was on the agenda, and I searched from years nineteen ninety-eight to January two thousand and twenty-two, and also went and looked at references and found nothing from February twenty-two to current. The rank states, specifically, this final plat becomes the instrument to be recorded in the Office of the, Office of the Register of Deeds when approved by the RPC and duly signed by the RPC secretary. Also stated, no plat or plan of subdivision of land of, into two or more lots shall be admitted to the land records of Jeff County or received or recorded by the registrar until said plat has received final approval in writing by RPC. Further stated, no register shall receive, file, record, plat, or subdivision without the approval of the RPC, and any registered doing so shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor. Goes on further to state, any building or structure erected in violation of the subdivision regs shall be considered an unwaffle building or structure, and the building commissioner or other official may bring action to enjoin such erection or cause it to be vacated or removed. In conclusion, these points suggest the survey plat for twenty-two fifty-one Jim Henry Road was improperly approved in-house and then filed improperly with the county's Register of Deeds. If so, the county should issue a stop order, work order on the sheds, and Grace should be required to return before this RPC for review, and if warranted, obtain proper approval. Also, controls should be put in place to prevent Grace from doing a possible future sequence of two-lot subdivisions and building more structures, creating a subdivision with disparate characteristics within an established subdivision of homes. Finally, shouldn't Jefferson County follow state and county codes and regs? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I do have one question for you, if you don't mind.
Yes.
The information you obtained from Carson Newman, did you say you saw, ma'am, I'm asking about what she did at Carson Newman, did you say you looked at the agendas, or you read the minutes from each meeting?
I looked at the agendas to see if it was an officially published agenda item as required by state codes and regs.
Okay. Not in the minutes, you didn't look at those, just to see if it somehow happened. Just to see if it somehow happened.
Correct, as was directed by codes and regs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your input.
Actually, sir, I did search every single standard banner in Jefferson Post newspaper, specifically looking... Actually, it was at the standard banner from the years 1998 through the year January... or, excuse me, February 2022. And that's when the digital records go up to right now. And I looked for articles that would have included a notice that there was a change, a public notice, anything such as that. So I did look at more than minutes. I've looked at articles. I've looked at anything in the paper. Yes. And I've got a digital copy of every single record, if one would like to see it.
Okay.
You're welcome. It took about 12 hours. Not all of the time.
I knew you'd be my favorite. 12 hours. But thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Got Jim Fox. And you want to speak to item F as well, Jim?
Yeah.
Jim, I want to get back in. I've been playing with... I'll have some leniency to do, but we're going to stay for the next three minutes.
Yes, sir, I understand. Actually, I'm not going to rehash what's already been said in the interest of time here. Jim Fox, Abilene Trail, Dandridge. Again, I think all the other things have been well presented and spoken about. I just want to highlight, you know, this very commission said that everybody involved with these turds sheds, because it's been a hot topic, needed to come before this very commission. And that included the people that owns it, the different departments, county departments ever involved, to come and discuss other group to find out exactly what's going on. And then they come with this two-lot... Come with a three-lot subdivision, then they backed off on that. And then, you know, to our surprise, a two-lot subdivision was approved without going before this board, even though it was directed by this board to come before this board to get to the bottom of everything that was going on. And that didn't happen. And unfortunately, it does... Whether it's intentional or not, or whatever, it does kind of wreak of impropriety. I do sympathize with the challenges that the zoning department has had with, you know, Mr. Seals and, you know, Stephanie trying to do the right thing, et cetera. But again, I do... But it does either shows... But that doesn't mean that you can just break over the rules or codes of conduct or whatever. And, you know, as I was growing up, you know, it's said, you know, we... It's been said, well, that's the way we've always done it. Well, you know, as I was growing up and et cetera, you know, ignorance of the law is no excuse. So, you know, hopefully, this was an honest mistake. But if not, you know, there should be some repercussions. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, have Mr. Ed Franklin? He wants to speak to item C, E, and F. Okay. Got Berlin out? He won't speak?
Oh, yeah. I didn't get a copy of that. You can have it. For years, we've had a requirement that if you cut off A1, you had to have at least 40,000 square feet and also approved by the Health Department. That's never been a problem. I don't see why that's a problem now. And then having all plats and surveys brought in front of y'all doesn't seem like a huge waste of time for just an acre off of daddy's place or your place or my place or whatever. When we've had a system that's worked here for years and we do it the right way, or they do, that's really all I got to say. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Berlin. All right. I can have it back on track time, last of the show. And give it over to Mr. Ed Franklin, ma'am.
You guys have a letter from me that's going to be seeing and married together. Addresses those two without me having the rest of my voice. As to the plats and surveys, the only thing I would like to address there is there's time elements that are going to create longevity issues that conflict with ordinary day-to-day business in the real estate industry. We cannot manage to deal with that when we have clients sell or buy or put your own self in their shoes. And you got to have closing within 30, 45 days. And the way that this is set up, you understand already that the time elements may push you into a third month out. I hope the common sense rule applies to shorten that or go internal with the zoning office. If it means training, I've had to train. Shoot, we've got 13 agents right now. We're constant in retraining so that we can do things more efficiently and quicker so that people are satisfied. And that's the people we serve. So whatever you do there, take a second look if there is a need. I'm not sure because I'm not sure where you're going. You haven't voted yet. But I think it can be done internally. My history for almost 55 years from the bank all the way to today, I have seen... I will contradict a little bit of Berlin's statement there because you see my 150, my 300. That... I'll tell you this story. Jack Lynn's not here, so everybody can tell him. And then he'll fight like hell out there and then we'll walk off holding them, you know, lugging each other. But I want to give you an example. I hope it don't go too much over three minutes. In a subdivision, basically, if you take that dimensions there and look at it from the past, you will find a lot of lots that are 100, 110, 120 feet wide. Doesn't... What it did, it just messed up a lot of situations where what was a three-bedroom was really a two. And then for the future, you couldn't do anything to like have a driveway access dual, put up a building in the right place because of topography, all that good stuff. So if you'll take a look at that circumstance as well, you'll come to a subdivision, and the developers... And we have one of these little funny arguments about when I was just joking about a minute ago in a board meeting. We had Jack and Gerald there. And I was trying to get them to pull back instead of having... For they were going to have 35 parcels. But we had seen through the lending process where we run into radiuses and we have to cut things in half and stuff. Sometimes this is a rock pile. Sometimes this is one soil. This is another. A house is displaced from when the person buying it's standing out there going, "I'm going to build my house right there." There is no way anybody can tell them that that's going to happen until what happens? Soils, site plan, period. If it were me and I had the sole authority, you wouldn't build a dang subdivision without that lot. And you had soils up front as a developer. And the site plan basically is at least going to box one of the two. It's going to tell you where your soils areas are or your house. It's going to be stuff. And then outside of that box, you can do whatever you want to. That is full and complete information that wouldn't have a one of us sitting here tonight if you hadn't bought a parcel out of the subdivision. Why would you not do that? And I got ran off from here a couple of times while they applauded me out the door because I never could get anywhere with that. And I say that in all good humor because like you started, ain't nobody left Jefferson County no more than I do. We'll all hold hands with that. So I hope that take your time is all I got to say. I've seen the hurrying thing a lot of times in my life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Good luck. That was approved, so this is them, huh? Thanks, Mr. Moving on down to new business. We have a rezoning request from A1 Agricultural Harvester to C2 General Commercial for a portion of property located at 1359 Deep Springs Road, Dandridge, by Mullins Enterprises.
Good afternoon.
And bless your all's heart. You need a raise. Lord seem to feel that I've got that 38 acres out there at Deep Springs. And me and my dad's put our heart and soul into it. It used to be a forest, but it's not now. I think it's pretty. And some of my old trucks that sits there, I kind of think they're pretty too, to me. And some of them don't move all the time, and they don't get on the road, and they don't make a drop of noise. But my plans are to build a house on top of the hill. I thought I'd go along with all my neighbors, but obviously, I see that I don't. But I just want a place to... I am in the commercial business. I have equipment. We have trucks, and we work for FEMA. And I usually work east coast, west coast. I don't work around here. And we may be gone for three months, you know? But I want to build my residence up on the hill. I want to play with my grandkids. I want to run them all over that 38 acres. But due to the complaints, I guess I can't park my stuff there. So the only reason I wanted to rezone this is just for my storage of my stuff. And I'll build some nice buildings or sheds, you know, something that's nice to put that stuff in on this block that I'm asking for, for commercial. But I didn't have no... You know, the only reason I wanted to do this because if I lived there, I'd like to... I didn't get my old truck or my old tractor or getting an excavator if I wanted to dig a little dirt. I could, but I have no plan. Do y'all have a map? Okay, do you have the... Yeah, I can take my entrance off of Black Road. I'll take the Gay Down. I'll take the drain out. I'll close myself off of Black Road. And on this drawing, it's 300 feet from the commercial lot I'm asking for to Black Road, but I messed up there. I'd like for that to be 200 feet if you approve this. So I'd be 200 feet from Black Road. I'd be 300 feet from my lower property owner, 200-some feet from my upper property owner. And it looks like at least 700 feet from my opposing neighbor. But like I said, we're not planning on doing no business there. It's just my... I own a business. I do own a business. And I'd like to be able to look out my front window, look at my garage, look at my stuff. But, you know, if y'all got any questions for me, I mean, I don't have no oil or old tars or anything like that. I mean, I like to keep things neat.
Looking at you all, both Track 1 and Track 2. So you own all the encumbrancy land.
All the encumbrancy land. That would be farmland and residential for me and only my children.
So there's no other property that would border what you're wanting to rezone?
No, not even close. And I have entrance on Deep Springs, already approved by the state. I've just not opened it up. And that's one reason the silence there.
What is the address of the property?
Bless my heart.
1359 Deep Springs Road. So its property address is...
That would be the commercial address, yes.
Okay, I think you were raising your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You touched on this... Let me ask him a question. That's okay. You have an excavation business, and you just yard your equipment at that property?
Some of it.
Is that...
Some of it, yeah. We have trucks. We've got... Lord's blessed me to fly a lot of toys.
Yeah. Is this not allowed in A1 to have equipment? I'm just not so sure that a rezoning is necessary here. Stephanie or Catherine or Tommy?
If I wasn't doing business... I mean, I'm not saying that I wouldn't go down and do a little job for somebody in the neighborhood, but I have, and I haven't charged them for it. But I'm not saying that I wouldn't do work in Jefferson County. I would. But I'd like to base my business, you know? But I want to live here, and I want to try to get my children to move here. There won't be one ounce of this property sold unless the whole thing sold. And it's going to be somebody's deep pockets and a developer. So I'd like to live there. But if the residents don't want me to live there, I can sell it.
You got a couple of questions. Adjacent property. Do you border against the convenience center?
Convenience center. Oh, yes, the dump, yes, the black property.
Yes, so it's right there beside it.
Yeah, I understand. It's what they...
It's over there.
Yes.
Okay. Which room?
It's right. Oh, the little pink.
Okay. The little pink is the property that we rezoned back in the fall.
It lays on the other side of the convenience center.
On the other side of the convenience center. The convenience center is actually A1.
I'm really trying to dress that up like I would, though. But we're all on the same page as what...
Yeah.
So I've still got my question.
Okay, you're right.
Could Catherine or Stephanie speak to... I'm just... I mean, we have equipment parked at A1 properties all over the county. I'm just... Is it necessary to rezone? I guess is my question.
Looking at the allowable uses in A1. When you say equipment, is it farming equipment?
Well, I make foreign unconventional, yeah. I mean, I've had some, you know, maybe a few livestock or something later on maybe a few livestock or something later on down the road for my children, my grandchildren, but no, it's excavators, dozers, I may have, I've got some tractors, I do my mowing with a skid steer, bush hawk, would mow that property.
As far as your allowable uses in your A1 sound district, excavating equipment is not farming equipment. And, I mean, there's- I think I don't have farming, obviously I'm not, I, I wouldn't say me, but I'm not that native, but, I mean, all you have to do is look at the, the uses that are allowed specifically to see if this one can do it. Even if you were looking for in a consultation of that issue by the NGA, that's what their charge for to do. So it's, nothing in there speaks to a commercial operation property. Now I'm sitting here looking at the aerial and that's been probably been extensively discussed. So it's a, it's a question, you know, this is a very complicated issue, well, and I can visit my comment, one of the things I think is, that I believe is-
Yeah, you were right, you were right.
One of the things that concerns me about residing in the county in general is that you don't have districts. You do a lot here and a lot there, it, it doesn't, it, it kind of aligns the reason that you have zoning districts, bring the very word in first, that you've got an area that is active commercially, that is on a road that supports commercial activities, that you've got a concentration commercial activity, you can service from police, fire, sewer, water, whatever, and that, that doesn't seem to be the case here, or not his fault that he has, that I can tell. It's bedratted to the point of, I don't know what you could do with it now, I mean, you said you might farm it, it, it's, at least on the aerial, and I can't, I don't know what that is, it's just dumb, is, it doesn't look that that's, that's an option anymore to go in there and do any kind of forestrying on it, actually that doesn't seem to be an option anymore.
It was not an option before, it was nothing but trees in the hillside and gullies. It could be farmed any kind of farm you want now, outside this, this zone here, I mean, you could plant anything you wanted, but I've got, I've built several ponds to catch, for the state water division, and oversized ponds to catch my runoff.
So you have it, it has been out to sea?
Yes, yes, we've had it for men, I've owned it for five years. We haven't done anything in a hurry, I mean, it's just when we had time.
Now, it, by saying that, if it won't support that, and Lori Romo's saying, you owned it for five years and this is the outcome of what your activities for five years. If you don't have based on the fact that it probably isn't your farmland or your forestryland, then it's like the attitude is killing your parents and going to self-harmers to the core because you're an orphan, that, that, that almost rewards the activity. It does seem like if, if that is not, whatever he's been doing, it's not seeming to be in keeping with the A1 sound district. Now, obviously, that's not something that's, that's, there's been a, a challenge to or anything like that. So I, I think you're, you're looking at the real of the planning condition.
How many total acres do you own there, Miss Baldwin?
Thirty-seven point, right, right around thirty-eight acres, thirty-seven point something. Does it say thirty-eight?
One other point I would like to make-
Oh, yeah, thirty-eight.
Is that, okay, sound districts are very specific, and he is asking if you own a portion of the property. The location should be more than that, it's not gonna be on a property, it should be on property line. It's very difficult when you're looking at valuations, even if you rezoned a portion of it, how are they going to base your taxes on if there is a property line that identifies what is commercial and what is not? So until, I, I wouldn't consider it at all pro or con until the area being requested for zone changes identified, so it can be replicated in the field.
A certain acreage?
Is that a, now I haven't seen this.
Yeah. No, did you know I would be in touch?
That I just got, um-
It's adjacent to a, a property-
So this has been so long? Yeah.
Yes.
Did you answer that question? I didn't have that, I haven't seen that.
We got that one, and there's another, one should be like this, and I think this was in February's past.
This is one I-
And this is a trend that you started, and we have to start this thing.
Oh, okay. Well, I wrote these five comments, that's what I have.
Sorry for, I did not know that you, you hadn't saw that, I didn't have that in your possession. So some of the things you were asking or making reference to, he has cleared up with this?
That issue, yes.
Okay, good. So is there anything else?
Do you want to give it? I guess you got some-
I know where the property is. I've walked a lot, it's probably your size.
With permission, of course.
Oh, yeah, we got it right away. Majority of the time. Austin, right there.
So this, the, the total piece of property is thirty-eight acres?
Yes.
Okay, and you're proposing how much, I see where you have the lines drawn, what, what a map, what acreage?
Well, that, that map shows nine point two-one acres, but I would, like I said, I messed up on that. I, I called, I would like for the distance between Black Road and the commercial lot to be two hundred feet. And I can take the entrance out of Black Road, I can just take it completely out.
So you currently have that three eighty-five, three eighty-five?
Yes, yes, that, that was my mistake, yes.
You want to slide it so that's gonna raise the-
Acreage, it would probably go up another acre and a half.
So you're still looking somewhere around a little over four of the property?
Yeah, eleven, probably eleven and a half acres.
And again, it's, touches county-owned property for the convenience center and then directly on the other side, touching the other side of the convenience center, adjacent to it, was rezoned in December, is that right? November, December to C2, correct?
Yes.
So if there are more properties, can I check your zoning map that probably the lot of the-
Is that convenience center county-owned or it's showing on, it's showing on Hubbard Bay?
No, it's, uh-
It's leased, it's leased at Hubbard Bay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think the only thing I've figured out so far is what Ms. Catherine said, that this is very complicated. I'm, I'm struggling on whether or not this really does need to be rezoned, which I know very minimal information at this point, but I would think the neighbor, the neighbors would probably prefer it stay A1 rather than C2 because once it's rezoned C2, that opens up for a lot of other uses.
I agree entirely with that.
So-
What else is allowed in C2?
None of the other people around, other than who spoke tonight, and even those who spoke tonight do not join the property. He owns buffer property between all of them, correct?
Yeah, it looks that way, yeah.
Okay.
What's proposed?
Okay, and it's, I understand where you're at, I would like to see the proper survey of the amount, and this is myself, and I'm, I'm just sharing that, I'd like to see that corrected to show proper origin acreage. And I think that's definitely needed, is it not?
Yes.
If we look at rezoning a piece of property, we need to know exactly what we can rezon.
And, and if you're gonna rezone, let's say you're gonna rezon Track One.
Right.
Track One needs to be recorded in the register of games office, so you're looking at a plat.
Right, we're looking at a plat. And I agree, there, there's a lot of stuff needs to be reined in and improvements made in our planning and our zoning. And we're working to do that. But until that's done, to say one neighbor on the other side has the right to do and an adjacent property owner cannot, then that's definitely spot-done. You're saying, well, we approved what this guy wants to do in this practice and he's sitting right here, and the other guy's wanting the same zone, but we're not gonna do it for him and it's five, six hundred feet away. You know, so I, I think we're, we're toeing a line there we need to be really careful with on that, and denying him the ability to do what he's wanting to do. Again, I would definitely want to see the plat, that's just my opinion on things, and it being proper on acreage and footage and, and those type things, anything else, Mr. Baldwin thinks we need to see, I would, I'm a fur on that. Austin, you have a question?
I guess, and, and maybe, maybe I'm missing a piece of information that would clear this up for me, but I'm still, Brian Randy, I think we know lots and lots of farmers that have what would be considered construction equipment, I mean, I think lots and lots of farmers have skid steers and I know quite a few have excavators, backhoes, so I guess where I'm coming from is, is a rezoning even necessary, I'm, if he's not, if he's not running like a, like a commercial business, I don't, which I guess he is if he's got his excavation business, but if he's just yarding the equipment, am I making any sense or? Cause it doesn't make any sense in here right now, but-
If you're, if you're yarding the equipment and you're saying that's agricultural equipment and then you're using it commercially, are you not in violation there? To take commercial equipment and to use it solely agricultural is one thing. And we, I think, as you said, we, several of us do that already.
Did it the other day.
Yeah, absolutely. But to call it agricultural and molest that and then be using it commercially, I don't think that's a good move, but if you were rezoned to C2, then you could use any of the equipment that you were storing on your property as commercial and there wouldn't be any line to straddle there. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yes, no, I, I'm just doing this to pacify, I don't know, but I, I'm not doing this for a business situation, but I, I do wanna do it now because we'll never hear the end of it until we get this done.
You're not doing it for, what are you doing it for if it's not for business?
To have my, to yard my business. I've got a lot of trucks, I've, I've got, I've got ten or twelve trucks, high funds in Kentucky, high funds here, if I come from Chattanooga or something and I wanna stop at my property, I, I don't want somebody to tell me I can't stop and park my truck there. It's not, it's not running in and out, there's nobody gonna throw out garbage, it's mine.
Can you park your truck now? I mean, why, why do we have to rezon for you to be able to-
Some of my neighbors don't like to look at it.
I think he's getting pushed back from the community over the truck sitting there.
It's not over noise, it's not over heavy weight on the county road, we don't haul, I mean, we've got some stuff sitting there, but as my neighbors have said, they sit there for two or three months. I can go start every one of them except for one grader that's got a head gasket plug, but I can go move everyone of them. And Tim said, why don't you move some of them, you know, Tim said, why don't you move some of them? Yeah, I'm not trying to do no business, I'm not trying to bring a bunch of truckers in here, I, I'd just like to live there and be able to look at stuff I own. I like to have my grandkids, we can run down there and toot the horn. But, but like I said, I'll not sell a piece of it, I'll sell it all as one thing if I can't live there and can't, and I've got along with everybody up and down Black Road and, and they can call me and I've got their number and they've got mine, and they can call me anytime they need some, but-
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Baldwin? Comments or anything? Okay, and, and again, no matter what the motion is moving forward, we would need to see the proper.
I meant to have it for you tonight and he couldn't.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baldwin.
So, I think we've, we've discussed it and I, I think I'm, I think I grasped the situation, but regardless of our discussion, this map needs to be updated based on, I think, what he means to request.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
So, would the proper thing, would we deny this map and he come back with a proper one, or do we need to push until we can get the proper plat in front of us?
I think a few ways we can handle that, we can postpone and move to next month and require that that information be presented. We could deny, but that's just gonna string things along even more with that and-
I don't want to-
We could approve contingent upon that being provided.
Yeah, I'm not looking for him to incur any more costs.
Right.
But I, I would prefer to get, I know we've done some, I, I would prefer that we, we go ahead and have the plat right when we make the decision. That's just my, my one preference.
You may get a form of motion.
I guess, do we need to deny this one and he come back with another one, or postpone?
It's, it's not a plat, it's a survey.
Okay.
But it's, this does not constitute a plat.
Okay, so would postponement?
Postponement, I think.
Would that be proper?
Best way to handle that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brooks?
I move to postpone item A until our April meeting.
Do we have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion about the motion to postpone this until the April meeting? Being none, all those in favor postponing this to the April meeting, let me know my say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Baldwin, you don't want your need to get back?
Yep.
Okay, I think Mr. Baldwin will save the more time.
Well, I have a clarification, so, Mr. Howell is your surveyor, he is, I mean, he could put this, as you did mention, plenty of law lines.
Yeah.
So he's, he's put this in the form of a, a viable plat, following the subdivision regulations and probably have vote on the agenda depending on the discussion on item F, I think, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you very much, sorry for the delay, no worries. That's my fault. I may have picked your word up. Okay, next item. B, rezoning request for rural resort to C2, general commercial for a portion of property along Chestnut Hill Road and Morgan Way. Dandridge, in Dandridge by John Hunt and Charlotte Morgan, Smoky Mountain Lake Adventures.
Good evening, council members, we're proposing to basically carve out two acres for a marine sales and service, we believe that's consistent with our property, we operate the marina down there, Smoky Mountain Lake Adventures, and we have a maintenance building that we would want to include in that, but it fronts Chestnut Hill Road there. I think we initially rezoned this somewhere around 2019 from A1 to rural resort, but we like, we're hoping to be able to transition a little more towards marine sales and service.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
We have taken proactive steps, you know, we're on with Eddie Garrett to get the survey done, we're on his list, we've contacted the soil scientists, you know, anticipate like one restroom, we're not looking at some giant, you know, sales department, like giant dealership, but we wanna be able to move some pontoons, sell pontoons, that's probably what we're primarily gonna be focused on.
You all currently offer like pontoon mill and some of that stuff?
We did, we did for, let's see, four and a half years, we rented pontoons and three cabins, but we're trying to transition away kind of from the rural resort, I think some of the problems y'all experienced with air being beast, we had similar problems, found the rental business was a pretty tough business overall, but it's, it gave us a good start, gave us a lot of good contacts and we love the community, you know, my three sons stay there and operate all this, so that's just kinda what we're looking at, hoping to be able to do.
Okay. Stephanie, you have anything on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brooks.
I make a motion that we accept that two acres is what it was.
Yeah, it's approximately two acre, Eddie's gonna come out and survey and shoot the points, but-
Recommend to commission, we can't make the decisions.
I make the motion that we do what we need to do to send this to commission, how's that?
We have a proper motion?
Sort of.
Yeah, I'd like-
I will second the motion to recommend to commission for the rezoning, but I have some questions.
Okay, and that-
But I will second the motion for the purpose of discussion.
We have a proper motion and a second? Play the motion, Mr. Brooks, second motion, and we'll open for discussion.
Did Ms. Baldwin, did you have any comments on this property? Okay.
Yeah, all of them.
Yeah.
Sorry. I mean, it, it seems to be in the area, I actually drove out here and looked at this one myself, it, it, there's a lot of this type of service, the commercial services out there, but, and it seemed to be in keeping with everything that's around me, you've got a marina district, it's not very far, I did, I do have the same concern that, which two acres?
Yeah, it's, it's actually-
Once again, you've got a large tract of land and, you know, you should be able to replicate a zone line in the field, because if you come back and you want to do a site plan for marine sales and service, you're gonna have to identify the boundaries of the zone district, because that's gonna determine things like buffer, number of parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera, and where, once, yeah, where is that two acres? And if you ever wanted to sell your business and there's not a two acre designation here, it's gonna be sold with everything else, which is, once again, that's kinda problem that, what's commercial, what's not, for your tax assessor, where does he go to assess that's commercial, what's gonna assess it residential or your rural residential? So, I don't, I actually have a problem with you, but I am concerned that you don't have a tract of zone to a commercial use.
What is total on our property, Captain?
Forty acres above the ten oh two and forty acres- Forty acres above uh, the ten oh two and forty acres below.
Okay, okay. Okay. If you would be, be willing to raise the survey.
Oh, yes.
And everything.
Absolutely. We're already talked to Eddie about that. He was real busy, but he said he would take care of shooting the points. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I knew we would have to have that too.
Yes, sir, Al.
So by rezone, it, ju- judging by the map, you want to take the two and a half acres to front of your parcel on Chestnut Hill Road and, and get it rezoned to the C2 zone. Does that cut off the rest of your property from the road access?
There is actually, it is that immediate frontage there on the, on Chestnut Hill Road. And then as you stand on that property, you can see the maintenance building that we use for Smoky Mountain Lake Adventures to prepare the rentals and such. So uh, uh, we built the road in there actually, so um, yeah, it's a, it's actually our private drive through there.
So you actually have a private drive to the remainder of the property that you're still working with?
Yes. Yeah, it's just the family out there that, me and my three sons. And I spend about half my time here and probably about half in Kentucky still.
Okay. Morgan Way, I've not been able to see it really good on this map. Does it cut through the middle of it, to the side of? Or does it lay on what you're wanting?
Don't you walk around and, yeah, this is one of our original maps. And this is John Tyler Ratliff of Smoky Mountain Lake Adventures, too.
First of all, he's uh, he reasonably proposed including this, but this is just the area. This is Morgan Way. This, it would come over here, so it actually will have its own turnip to the right here. So it wouldn't be any of this rubbing up all the way out. It would just be this immediate road frontage. I think it's about three hundred foot.
Okay.
On Chestnut Hill Road and it's um, the land came from where the roadway was with it on permission. We got permission to uh, grade it down. So there's land here that used to be inaccessible.
Okay, so Morgan Way would still access your property and everything that there wouldn't rezone? Of course, we'll see that on the plat, but everything if you want to rezone would lay to the north at the intersection with Chestnut Hill Road, Morgan Way?
Yes, yes.
It will have its own turnip.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, Tyler, just jump on here, please.
Sorry.
And, and I'm not here on any complaints from neighbors. My neighbors and I, you know, we've always got along well, Blake Tarn, Randy Giles. There's really not, you know, it's larger tracks, so there's really not a lot of neighbors around me there. But as I read the zoning regulations and we, as we look to expand into this area, you know, I really couldn't find anything for marine sales and service. A1 had marinas, C2 had marinas, so, and uh, no wait, maybe C2 didn't have marinas. I think rural resort had marinas. So we were designated a rural resort, so I thought, I believe this covers it. So I went down and talked to Stephanie and we thought, maybe not. Maybe we need to be more into C2 that this is more what we're looking at now, so. And with that, we made the, you know, put out the notice. So I'm not sure I wasn't covered under rural resort because I couldn't find anything to match a marine sales and service. There's mention of small engine repairs, so that's why I'm here to rezone if need be. If you tell me I don't need to be, then we're good.
Yeah.
That was probably my initial question. I just.
So no, you know, you're good. I was, I was looking it up, not, not mostly geared out. Did you have, did that cover your initial question once you did second?
Yeah, so, so there's a, I guess there's a road on the upper end of the, the, or the Chestnut Hill side of the property, Morgan Way, that, that cuts in, so that, that is how they would access this back? Cause we'd be creating two parcels, is that?
Right.
Okay, so that's how you would access the back rural resort parcel?
That's the way I understand it.
And then they could get an entrance, I guess they have to deal with the state on.
If it actually, what he showed, it would come off of Morgan just as you turned it in.
Oh, okay, just, yeah, that, okay.
Just as you turn it in. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct, yes.
That makes sense.
I mean, we've already been working on it. We're just seeking approval because we knew we were gonna use it for something. There's just a big giant berm there initially. So we went through T-DOT, you know, took care of that and been in touch with AEC on moving the power pole. So we, we want to use it for something, but this is what we hope we can use it for.
And, and you've already made improvements to some unusable land that this has been.
Basically just removed a big berm that was, you know, blocking the whole view.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay. Yes, sir, Al. I, I've, I've got something that you, you might get cleared up right here.
Oh, I, I think I'm gonna take us further down the rabbit hole. Uh, do we know where the nearest C2 parcel is to, to this one?
I can't.
I think the garage, just as you come out of the curbs on Chestnut Hill, C2 on the left, not in business anymore. But I think your property is C2, most Chestnut Hill Road. The marina's right back in Dandridge.
Oh, well, I guess the city stuff wouldn't appear on these, on your map.
We don't have cities.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we actually determined some time ago when we first started this that we were outside the city, yeah, city language.
There's a garage, just about the curbs, that's over east side of it. And they, they're not been business with you here, but I, I, I can promise you that I think that property would be conscious. And if you travel just a little bit further down the road, you've got the entrance to Money Creek and Money Creek Market.
Yeah, you got Lakeview, you got Indian Creek down there. And before you get to us, you got the point, so.
You got the point. And then I think there's a uh, construction outfit has a storage garage right there against the front.
There is.
C2 is way.
Might be, maybe my pistol's place might be it. Yeah, yeah.
So there, there's a lot of others in the city. But again, we need, need the plat before we can actually. So often you gain more questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Took me a minute to catch up. There's a process in here, not a good one, but.
We hear it.
Uh, you can hear it. Um, so you can confirm for us that this does not fit into rural resort, what he's asking?
So uh, since that rural resort does allow uh, it owns commercial nature, it says that it's supposed to be accessory to um, so the resort accessory uses include hotels, conference centers, the question facilities, marinas and offices. So it, it, it's oriented toward the, if you're renting property or whatever. And this is more commercial sales and service effects. Um, and um, the uh.
So the C2 would be the most appropriate zone?
Some more, actually.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's um, you know, again, the principal uses is multifamily developments, detached single family houses and duplexes. And, and they, they, they're supposed to be part of a plan to develop. And then the accessory uses are, if it's part of a pub, typically that, they would be allowed like a marina. It almost in the, in the case, it would be a private marina for the utilization of the people residing in the resort. Or, or utilizing the resort at a given moment. Um, so I, I don't see, um, that it does say accessory uses include the following. This is provided they are within a principal building or once again, part of a pub. It's commercial, convenience commercial, including gasoline, service station, the market, riddles, video rental, which they don't have in law. Uh, restaurants, drugstore, refresh stores, lounges, bars, video game or cake. But again, these are services that are not retail establishments.
Any more questions, I promise. You're good? Come on.
This is currently one parcel and he's asking to take a piece off and rezone it. Is that correct?
Entirely correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and that's what we talked about. He's missing Mr. Garrett and stuff. That's all, all been part of that. So here we are, kind of where we was on the last item on the agenda, needing the plat. What's up with this? Do we want to postpone? If everything else is in line and that's the only holdup, do we want to take the motion and we have? And amend that motion to make it contingent upon plat approval? And, and forgive me, my parliamentarian is, is uh, he's no longer with us on that, so we are gonna.
Mine too.
Do best we can with it, so. Ma'am, 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 ma'am! You're, you're fine, you're fine. Just uh, so Randy, you made the original motion. It has been seconded.
If I word it correctly, I agree with what you're saying with the plat being contingent on the plat being drawn off and serving.
Being drawn off right back to us?
Yes.
The way it's supposed to be to show what you were asking for, Kevin, is that?
Yeah, uh, you know, your zoning map is, it's uh, it, they're easy to maintain if you have property law. If you don't have property law, they're very difficult to determine where it is. Uh, also when it goes before your county commission, uh, it will say, we're going to rezone. Because it, once it's recorded, there's a map written parcel number.
Right.
So your resolution for approval is going to reference that exact piece of property identified by that tract of land.
When's, when's the next meeting, Al?
April.
Mission.
Twenty first. That's the vote.
We're down to twenty.
Our meeting is the twenty second.
Yeah, so we're after that. So if that could be brought in and presented, that could move forward and not be held up for.
Or this meeting will occur one day after the commission voting, so.
That's what I'm saying, but if he brings in the plat that is how Catherine's telling me it needs to be, then he's meant to contend that he made on the motion that Catherine's made tonight, then it could be voted on. And he's all held up for another three months to get that done. If that's the only hiccup we have, and Catherine, would you be willing to look at that to make sure he's recorded these? Okay, Stephanie, would you please with that? So that keeps from holding the man up trying to get something done. That we're all agreeing that can be done, it's just a contingent upon that piece of plate.
So.
You're amending your motion?
Amending the motion contingent on the plat being drawn out to where we can actually survey that piece of property off to separate it from the rural resort, so that we have, to have a plat for the uh, C2 zone.
Okay.
Contingent on that.
I'll agre, well, I'll, I'll just agree to the amendment since I was the second.
So, everybody understand what we got now. We're gonna prove, prove this, continue to phone that plat being presented and Catherine looking at it. You'll prove it, looking at it, making sure things are being recorded. That way it can be at the next county commission meeting. Okay, everybody understand?
One thing is your surveyor is on board and already has um, everything for a pair of plats prior to the voting of the county commission?
I, I'm hoping this time will, you know, that I will be able to get that within his timeframe. I know we, we already took everything to him, talked to him about it, and he told us he would shoot the points and. It is it, yes. He did the original one, too.
Can I have a clarification? When you do some uh, a rezoning before county commission, is the resolution, is only one consideration? There aren't two? Okay.
Which has the recommendations from, from us and then you guys to their public hearings.
Yeah.
So everybody's in the same page now. Got the motion, got the second. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor of passing the motion that has been seconded about the rezoning of that parcel, once it's presented to C2? Let me know my saying aye. All opposed? So the passing, you know exactly what you need to do, thank you.
I've got a game plan. Thank you, members.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Kevin.
Is your surveyor Eddie Garrett?
Eddie, yes.
He's got my contact information. Go ahead and send me his uh, electronic digital copy.
Okay.
For the plat.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are to.
C.
Okay. Order C. We're down to C. And this is a resolution amending the subdivision regulations of Jefferson County, Tennessee regarding road construction, bonding, and as-built drawings.
Um, so this is a amendment that has been, we've um, kind of passed around a little bit. Um, I don't think it's, I don't think you got the uh, final draft. Um, it was a, I amended it on February seventeenth, and that was actually the meeting that was canceled. And uh, we did, I did quite a extensive um, amendment at the request of the um, county commission members. But you don't have a copy of that, so you may want to postpone it and make sure we can get you a copy. Um, I read on my draft.
I've not, I've not, Mr. Chairman, I've not seen it, so her recommendation, I'll move to postpone to the April meeting.
That's why we're having motion second. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor of postponing item C to the April meeting, please let me know my saying aye. All opposed? Item D on the agenda, a resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County. Pardon me, I'm gonna start over. A resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee regarding a new C3 zone. Wholesale and Warehouse Commercial District, and this is presented by Mr. Alton Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know some changes were made to this resolution. I did not receive that in my packet. I.
That's probably the same with your last one because.
Yeah, I, I think.
Last minute, but everything out of bullets.
Yes, perfectly understandable. Um, so perhaps postponement would be appropriate on this item. Because I, I'm assuming nobody, none of you have a, an up-to-date copy.
I've, I've, we've seen what we've talked about before in the past, but I think the big statement on all that was moving value-added.
Process.
Yes, and I know uh, Mr. Scarlett had worked on that a lot and um, so I don't, I honestly don't know where we're at on that resolution as far as some changes have been made where it's gone back and forth for several months. So I would prefer that when we discuss it, that everybody has a copy of where we're at today. Uh, so that we can have educated discussion on it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will move to postpone this item until the April meeting.
We have a proper motion, we have a second. Have a second. Any discussion on postponing on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out, uh, Mr. Bales might get a bad reputation if he continues to second my motions.
I haven't thought of it. But we've got to have the information in front of us and I think everybody agrees with that. If we're agreeing, that means something's right.
And that was the issue, was how you had the process?
I know that was one of the talking points that we've had.
I have heard that talked about in this county before, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. And we're still looking at software maybe, so uh, any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor of postponing item D until the April meeting? Please let me know my saying aye. All opposed? Both are passing. This is on the agenda, but I appreciate the, the ability to laugh on some of these things, and that's, that's great. Again, like we said at the beginning of the meeting, everyone here wants to make Jefferson County the best place for all of us to live. I don't think if we, we didn't care about Jefferson County, we sure wouldn't be volunteering at that time, be here, you, I wouldn't be sitting in the stands. So I appreciate your support tonight very much. Moving on with the agenda. Item E, a resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee to increase the minimum lot size in the A1 zone agricultural park. Presented by Alton Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have these, a copy of these in our packet. I hope everyone's had a chance to read them over. If you recall, last year, Jefferson County, at the direction of the county commission, conducted a long-range planning survey. One of the recommendations of that survey was to, and I, I think Mr. Bales might have been a part of that committee at that time, maybe?
Anyway, go ahead.
Uh, so.
I flipped it too, so.
Um, one of those recommendations was to increase the minimum lot size to ten acres. So what I have presented, this is a document that was prepared by County Attorney Doug Drennan. What I am proposing is an increase to three acres and that would be a minimum lot size in the county. That does not uh, alter anything in the sub. That does not, uh, alter anything in the sub regs. And the basis of that is I worry about density in the county affecting county roads, county schools. Uh, I shortened it up, county resources. I worry about how that affects that. Now, we heard from two very good realtors in our county tonight, and, uh, Mr. Franklin was kind enough to print his comments here. And there is a valid concern if, uh, if Mr. Bales decides he wants to cut a piece of land off of his farm and gift it to me. Uh, this would mean the minimum lot size would have to be increased to three acres as opposed to currently, we're at point nine-two acres. So I don't know if, if anything can be done in a family situation, and how far do you extend that to? So that is why, rather than presenting the ten acre, I reduced it to three acres. I, I do see where there can be an issue there, but, uh, what I see happen a lot, as I'm sure most of you see happen on our county roads, is we'll see a piece of farmland get cut up and sold, and every acre, we have a house effectively creating, in my opinion, a subdivision with no oversight from the county. So that is, uh, why I had County Attorney Drennan put this resolution to present here tonight. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and, uh, move this, uh, as a recommendation to the county commission.
Okay, we have a motion from the board, move this as a recommendation to county commission, do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a second, it's open for discussion. Austin, I've looked at this and, uh, share with me, and I know you did it in a roundabout way there, but share, if anyone made the intent of doing this.
Okay.
Why, what is the, what's the value of the outcome?
Yes, so we are getting density in a part of our, in, in the county, and when I say in the county, you understand I'm saying outside of the city limits. So that puts a strain on county resources, and, uh, Mr. Bales and I are both on, on budget committee, and, uh, we, we see the effects that, uh, this growth has had on our resources. And I feel that letting all this go unchecked is, it's causing serious financial strain on our county. There are other factors that we cannot control, such as inflation. Uh, we've experienced that with our insurance, there's nothing we can do about inflation as a county. But on the density, this is where the county could step up and try and rein that in. So I'm not proposing that we do away with development by any means. What I'm proposing is, we have, uh, development districts, we have the R one and the R two district. What I'm proposing is, if we're gonna have a dense development, that it should be in, uh, rezoned into that R one district rather than using the agriculture district for dense development. Does that, did I answer your question, or?
You did, and I've been thinking about this one for, for a couple of weeks now, pretty hard, and some concerns I have with doing this. And I, I do understand that there has been a deficit created because of the higher population and stuff, and there's some other ways that I think, and I'm definitely not trying to tell county commission how to handle the business, but I think there's other ways to offset some of that cost with some, uh, exit tax, interest tax, and things we've seen, you know, turn out really good in neighboring states and neighboring areas. What bothers me with this is with the subdivision regs that we've added in the past couple of years, twenty-four foot roads, uh, other things, we continue to drive the cost of developing that subdivision up. And if you've got a subdivision with a thirty thousand, forty thousand dollar acre tract of ground to build a house on, and you turn that into three acres, well then, in my opinion, we're having discussion and top of the penguins, we have priced our, our own folks out of being able to afford that, blue collar folks, the folks that live here, the citizens of this area. Now, we all know that tons of property have been sold to other places, and people took that money and came here and invested. But if we make that forty thousand dollar lot in a subdivision, it could be a really nice home into a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand dollar lot. You've limited the clientele, the citizens are gonna be able to afford that. And in doing so, in my opinion, we've just took and put a burden on our children that they'll never be able to purchase. They're just gonna make it a whole lot harder for them. Now, that, that's one thought about that. So we price it out of the range for people that live here already. Another thing, I know a lot of folks have farmed, I know a lot of folks are getting old. I'm for farm land preservation, and we have some great things taking place in the state that will.
Yes, we do.
Help.
Yes, sir.
Folks, maybe keep that in production agriculture a little bit longer. And I, I support those things a little harder. But if I look at the guy who's got no heirs, and he's held onto that piece of ground, and he's working, done what he's got to do, and he's getting close to the retirement age, and that's someone we're all striving to get to. And he's looked at that piece of property for the last twenty years, and he's paid taxes and worked and maintained, it's being his retirement. And now we've affected the value of his retirement on him being able to sell his property. So we put an undue burden on the property owners now by increasing that. I have seen, and I've been blessed to be able to see in surrounding counties as well as this one, developments for twenty-five years. And I'm definitely no, uh, expert on those things, but the only place I've seen something with a large lot size work is in Grand River County, where there is no planning and zoning, and it's on the river, and it's a, and they get there, and they got five plus acre tracts. If you're gonna do three, you could do five, and then they only have to come fourth. We only have, we don't have any of this. You know, so in, in my opinion, and again, I say my opinion and what facts I know. I think if we look for moving for the three acre minimum lot size, we're doing a disservice to our own citizens. Not the folks moving in here that have, you know, tons of motors behind them. And we're doing a disservice to our property owners who have looked at that property that they own as a source of income during their retirement, of being a movement, move those things. That's my opinion. So that's some issues I have with it, I just, I really think we need to staple where we're at. We need to focus that growth to certain areas. And I think that comes in doing our, our planning and our zoning and stuff, and then we work in that, we want to direct it to, and then push it there. But to tie the hands of property owners and, and children that are grown up here, to being able to spend a hundred thousand dollars to have a, a lot in subdivision, I, I think we're getting way out of the weeds of that.
My opinion. Yes, sir.
Maybe I didn't communicate, uh, effectively on, on the intention, the intention here. So we're not doing away with subdivisions by any means, we still have a zone for that. So in the scenario that you are, uh, an older person, and you have no heirs, or perhaps your heirs have no interest in the land and just want the money, uh, which happens, uh, I don't see that the, this affects the value whatsoever as the property could be sold to a developer. The developer can get the property rezoned into the residential district and cut up a subdivision. Uh, this doesn't pertain to subdivisions, this resolution doesn't pertain to subdivisions. This is pertaining to property in the county adjacent to county roads. The intent is to, if we're going to have dense development, the intention is that they come before the county and say, this is what we're doing. We're developing this property, we need to rezone into R one as opposed to taking a county road and just cutting up the, cutting up a bunch of lots along the county road and creating that dense development with no oversight. That, that's the intention, maybe I didn't communicate that properly.
No, I, I do not get that from your original, but I, I understand where you're at now. So, and, and just immediately reply to that is, we've got a property owner who's got two children, and he's got six acres. And he wants to give them each a place to build a house on his piece of property. Did we not just hand him that?
No, sir. Uh, in that scenario, he would need to come and rezone, and I think that is a consideration that this body would give if this were to pass. He would just simply have to rezone, nobody is boxed in. What this does is provide more oversight. Um, you had also mentioned the high price, so obviously, three acres costs more than one acre. Uh, three of anything usually costs more than one of something. So I would submit to you, I was at a development in White Pine the other day, where they had starter homes, that's what they called them. And I asked, out of curiosity, what these starter homes were going to be priced at, and I was told three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what level of income you made starting out, but to purchase that home, these starter young couples would need to have an income of around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand household income per year to purchase this starter home. Uh, I would submit to you that, uh, the children, uh, people my age are already priced out of, uh, of purchasing homes.
Is that when the picture was in the paper, in the half acre lots?
Yes, sir, did I look good in the picture?
I just saw the picture with the half acre lots and then the three acre here.
That. Different zone.
Different zone.
Yeah.
But, uh, Austin, I appreciate where you're at with that, but again, I, I think, uh, I think we're doing a disservice with going to those three acres. If we're seeing that in those zones, we don't need to make it as hard as that in the rest of the county for them folks to own home.
I'm sorry, seeing what in?
If you're seeing the three hundred and eighty-nine thousand on half acre lots in that zone that are in, we don't need to take the risk of the county, and maybe it follows suit to driving prices that high.
Yeah, so I don't see that we're driving prices high, we're simply putting in a check and balance where.
I don't see how you, you can make the statement that we're going from an acre from the minimum lot size, or a little less than an acre, let me think. So you have to have, now have three acres to do what you want to do. So it's in and of itself making the price higher.
Yes, sir. I think maybe I'm not communicating properly. If you have a large parcel of land, and you decide, kids don't want it, I'm gonna go ahead and cash out, and then they will be the heir to this money as opposed to the heir to this land, which I find to be an incredibly sad situation, Mr. Chairman, but that's my personal feeling, so. Um, in that scenario, a developer most likely would be the one to purchase that land, as it would be very difficult for you or I to go out and purchase that land for agriculture purposes. I'm sure you've, you've faced that already, so. Uh, in that scenario, that developer comes before this body and says, I have, let's use one hundred acres that I would like to develop, this is where it is at. And he would put together plans to develop a subdivision. I don't see that we're affecting that whatsoever. I'm speaking to when you have a piece of farmland on a county road. Let's say you have a hundred acres and you have two county roads bordering that property, and we go every point nine-two acres and stick a house, we are effectively putting density into that area, and there's zero oversight from the county. So all I'm proposing is, in, for that scenario, it should be a three acre lot rather than point nine-two acres. If we're going to have small lots, to me, point nine-two acres is a lot, that's just an opinion. If we're going to have these small lots, they belong in a subdivision, they belong in that R one zone, in my opinion.
I'm somewhat sympathetic to what Austin Brooks is saying. When, when I came here thirty years ago, I used to go down ninety-two towards Jefferson City, and there were farmland around there. Now what I see is a sea of Horton homes, thousands of them. And if we don't regulate the way Austin's proposing, we're gonna have a sea of Horton homes in this county.
Okay, those are in the city.
Well.
There's no Horton homes.
Well, it's gonna, it's, it's, eventually it's gonna spill over there to the county as well.
It'll have to come to us when it does.
Well, uh, let's, let's prevent it from happening before it comes to this county.
I, I think, and Bob, I feel the same way you do, I, I think those are detrimental to us, but in your talk about subdivision, plant development.
I like to have plant subdivisions, you know, with three acres, you know, I think it'll be a better county.
To back up to what Mr. Brooks has said, he's not talking about subdivision. So that's, that's completely different deal.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on this? Any other questions? About moving it from one acre to three acre, point nine?
One nine-two.
Four nine-two, one nine-two. It's not fair to point.
I'm sorry, from point nine-two to three acres? What, what was the other?
Well, there's, there's some discussion going on right here, you know, fine.
I find it a hindrance to the property owner. I understand the principle of what you're thinking, and I respect that, but I've got three kids. And I may not wanna give them three acres apiece, 'cause that's not acres of my property that's gone that I, that. If something happens, let's say they got, they had a car accident, killed somebody, got sued, they could, they could take that three acres. And until, until I'm dead and gone, I just think, I'd rather do one acre apiece, let them have a place, barring that the septic and all that stuff does. I find it, you know, we're limited them, but yeah, they can do subdivision or whatever and make it okay to do half acre lots, which I totally disagree with. But I just, I can't, I can't vote in favor of this, that's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what Mr. Bales and I, and keep in mind, I, I'd like an acre too, or three. So you talk to the kids and see if you can work me in there. Um, what Mr. Bales has, has just spoke to is a reasonable argument, and I might find myself in that situation one day, though I'm very much opposed to cutting up land, personally. Personally. Uh, I do not intend to cut any of my land up, I'm looking to purchase land around it, personally. Um, I wanna, I wanna touch on what Mr. Bales said, so in that scenario, I don't see that we're putting a strain on the property owner. I think you were using yourself and your property as an example, is that correct, Mr. Bales? Yes, there is. So in that situation, he could come in and rezone a portion for R one and go pretty darn small, I, maybe twenty thousand square feet. Go pretty small on the lot size in that scenario.
But are we not then just doing spot zoning everywhere? And we are against that?
I would argue we've been spot zoning in this county for a long, long time.
Been doing a lot of other things in this county that we're trying to rein in.
Yes, sir.
And so is what being proposed not going to encourage that with the solution you just gave?
I think we have come to a, a fork in the road, Mr. Chairman. And I think maybe we see issues with both sides of it. And I think, uh, maybe Mr. Bales was speaking to that, that we're gonna have to pick. Let me close with this.
Yes, sir.
I bet you like to hear that. Let me close with this, just on this issue. If not this, to try and rein in the density and preserve agriculture land, I would ask that anyone voting no on this would come back with an alternative solution. I think we're in agreement, there is an issue, but perhaps the disagreement comes in that this may not be the proper solution. So I would just ask that if anyone's gonna vote no, uh, we already have a motion and a second, if anyone's gonna vote no on this, that they come back with a, another idea. And that, that's my, I don't have any authority, I'm just, that's just a request.
Austin, I think you worked that very well, I'm, I'm, I'm behind you a hundred percent.
I'm gonna stop at that then.
Is there any other questions or discussions on this? If they, everybody good on this? We have a motion in the second to send this on to county commission to make lot size go, lot, make lot size go from nine point two to three acres in the county.
In agriculture.
Point nine, okay.
Pardon me, point nine-two.
In the agriculture zone. I, I like the way you think, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
That sounds reasonable to me.
So all those in favor of moving it to three acres? So, all those in favor of moving it to three acres, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. So, we're three-three. Both in favor, yeah. I will back up what I had said to your question. I think that we, as planning commission, some of our real estate guys, maybe some developers, and then some of our agricultural guys, that own these large tracts of ground, could look and put in together a workshop, to where we can talk about some of these things, and see. You know, I think that there's something can be done, and I think we need to do something, but I think we need to get input from all those folks before we make any kind of decisions on this. So, that's my no and an offer. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything? Okay. So, we're on to the item F. Discussions require that all plat surveys should come to the planning commission for approval presented by Austin Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone's up to speed on the sheds in the Chestnut Hill area, we're all up to speed on what took place there, right?
Yeah, I think so, I don't know, Randy, has been...
I heard you had a commission.
Okay, so I, okay.
Bobby, and you're familiar with everything with this, I think.
I am, but I don't feel it's been, I don't feel it's been resolved.
That's what we're getting at, talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, I checked with our county clerk, Frank Herndon, and asked, my understanding, and I could be wrong about this, that there would need to be a resolution on file, that, so state law gives counties the, or planning commissions, regional planning commissions, the authority to delegate up to a five plat approval to their zoning department, zoning officer. Is, am I correct in saying two? Two, okay.
It's actually been amended, they can do up to twenty-five, if there is a preliminary plat file.
Okay.
So we could make a resolution to let, to have everything in twenty-five, isn't it?
No.
Oh.
No, the, the, what the code says, it does allow the planning commission to authorize staff to review and approve plats, that does not mean signatures. Only the secretary of the planning commission can sign a plat. There have been, the actual Tennessee code used to say that register of deeds that took a plat without the secretary's signature was guilty of a misdemeanor, and you could get that back, there was some other thing. They actually took that out, so that language, it still says that the secretary, I mean, that the register of deeds should not take a deed less than five acres or a plat without the secretary's signature. They removed the misdemeanor part, because register of deeds looks at, I mean, they will pay a hundred documents a day, and they were determined not to be the planning police, basically.
Did everyone hear Catherine on that? 'Cause I know, she was, I figured it was a mic, but I think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The misdemeanor thing was spoke from a mic, so I just wanted clarity on that for everybody here.
When did it get released?
It's, it's been about, it's been a while, I mean, that's, that's been a while. And it also is different between municipal planning commissions and regional planning commissions, or county planning commissions. The bottom line is, they can't ascribe that responsibility to the staff. It also says the staff can decide not to accept it, if, or make a judgment call, like, this plat I'm comfortable with, this cap plat has extenuating circumstances, and I'm not comfortable with approving it. Regardless of whether you ascribe that responsibility to the staff, it still requires the secretary of the planning commission to sign it. So, if that has been a practice, that's, it needs to stop. And I don't think there was an intent there, I think there was probably this communication years ago, and, you know, nobody likes to hear that's the way we always done it, because there should be a better reason.
Yeah, and I'm gonna back up on what Catherine's saying, and forgive me for interrupting, but nineteen ninety-eight is the year you kept referring to, as you looked to, so we're talking twenty-seven years of past practice. I don't know where in that it started, and we don't know if we've got all the minutes, we don't know, we don't even know who was on those planning commissions, that may have done that, but, we're all certain it had been past practice. This was nothing new, and to my knowledge, and it's short compared to that twenty-seven years about planning, there's never been an issue till now, that we know of on record. So, we had a contingency issue, a contentious issue, that was refought, redesigned, and they come up with something that fell in past practice available in this county, and they come to the person who's sitting in the position to make that decision, and has all authority according to past practice. And she followed suit, and it made some folks unhappy, it made some folks happy. We're hearing from the ones that are unhappy. I'm gonna say this, and I'm speaking freely, to call for somebody's job and not really have the information, it's out of line, especially if you have went in and talked, and had those kind of conversations, and if our planner, pardon me, Bob, if our planner just told us that there's no misdemeanor, we're accusing somebody of criminal, of a misdemeanor. Folks, we're out of line. Brian Morgan.
Brian, may I say something?
As soon as I get done. So I just ask you, if you're gonna come to the podium, if you're gonna do your research, and I applaud Ms. Miller for the research, I'm glad you've got the time to go back and look for that, and I'm thankful for the work you've done, even though we found out some of it's inaccurate, as far as what can be done, what can't be done, as punishment for those.
Well, and, before Mr. Arkansas speaks up.
He's first, she, or he's not dead?
You know, I have a patient, I'm a doctor.
The bottom line is, if the plat had come in, and I have not seen it, but if it was in compliance with your subdivision regulations, I think the ultimate goal would maybe have been to not allow the subdivision to have a card in the first place. If it meets your subdivision regulations, and they have complied with all the requirements, you're compelled to approve it, even if it came here, you would've had to approve it. So the...
Whether we want to or not, you know, you're in lawsuit, and you're spending county dollars to defend yourself for doing something that you shouldn't have done. Now, Bob, I'm done, and...
Thank you very much, Brian. Brian, two months ago, I was in this, this room, where this, this committee rejected the sheds without prejudice. We rejected it, we voted against it. We voted, let me finish, we voted against it, and the next thing we find out, that the bureaucracy, the zoning people, approved it, without our approval. Either, either our committee's meaningless, or these people can make their decision.
Bob, we did not approve what we rejected with prejudice.
We rejected it with prejudice.
Right, but they, that...
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Yes.
Pardon me. We did not approve what they were trying to get done. They changed that to a two-lot subdivision, that was not what we rejected. They changed what they were doing on the property, and made what they wanted to do following line with what has been allowed, that's what Catherine just said. What they initially wanted to do, cabins, and bringing folks in, and church camps and all that stuff, we didn't approve that.
We didn't approve it.
Absolutely.
But yet, they have created an eight-bedroom youth hostel, which is going to be fulfilling the original goal they had, and bypassing the rules and regulations we've had.
I'm not, I'm not sure how...
You're not sure about that?
But it's not real residential, or not, real resort. What was approved was a two-lot subdivision for residential housing.
It's, my understanding is it's still Zone Day One, which is a single-family detached home, I'm assuming that it's being inspected, so, and they actually did come before this body and request to have a camp there, and that request was denied. They asked for an interpretation in the A1 zone district, that that was an allowable use, and it was determined that that was not an allowable use. So, I think that, if there's a problem, it's in enforcing your regulations to ensure that they end up being single-family detached homes, one on each of the two lots, as principal buildings, so it's an enforcement issue, it's not a subdivision issue.
So if we had a county enforcement officer, a codes enforcement officer, they'd be someone who could monitor that and look at it.
Right, and it...
Need that position funded for county...
May I, another point, I live in Forest Glen subdivision, it's a subdivision, and the shed people created a subdivision within our subdivision, is that allowed? Is that allowed?
Unless you have...
Without going through this, this committee?
As long as it is in compliance with the A1 zoning, which currently is a forty thousand square foot lot minimum, unless there were deed restrictions that were recorded with the lots in question, meaning the entire subdivision, then the, anyone within that subdivision can challenge them on violating the deed restrictions. The county cannot enforce deed restrictions.
But I could.
But you could, yes.
Well, I'm, okay.
If they are covered by the same deed restrictions, otherwise you're determined to have, you don't have standing to challenge them for violating the restrictions.
And, Bob, I'm not making a lot of your concern about it, and, and I'm speaking in opinion, I think things weren't done nowhere near the way that it's supposed to be done, but the end result, looking at past practice, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, was acceptable in this county, and I think Ms. Baldwin has stated that in the last two or three comments she's had to make. So, whether we like it or not, it's passed.
It has passed, they've created an eight-bedroom youth hostel, which we're gonna have about thirty people living there, in our subdivision, and I don't think anybody in our community is gonna be in favor of that.
And the way it's zoned, and what they have put in for in the subdivision, it's a single-family dwelling.
Okay, with twenty-four people living in it, from Argentina, Venezuela.
So, there is another layer of regulatory issues that come to play in here. If you're doing what is called group assembly, if they are truly operating a church, or a youth hostel, or whatever, then, Stephanie, we do need to take note of that. Any kind of community assembly has to have approval of the state fire marshal.
Absolutely.
And if that, if they are indeed, one, they're in violation of the zoning ordinance, and two, they're in violation of state fire codes, and when you, when you're calling in the fire marshal of the state of Tennessee, that means you've, they will come in and look at it for safety issues, and the safety issue, the place would have to be sprinkled, there would, there are large, large costly requirements, if it is true group assembly. If it is being operated for that, then they do need to be cited for a zoning violation, and you do need to notify the state of Tennessee.
Okay, I wanna say this, and I think we're operating in hypotheticals right here. We have had people employed by the county, who have went out and inspected these things, they might have stepped in, they've been looked at, they've been inspected, and everything that's been brought back to us is in compliance with what the county says it's supposed to be. I respect you, and I appreciate your concern and your enthusiasm, and I'm not saying you're dishonest, dishonest, but do you have concrete proof that that is being operated that way? And if so, that needs to be presented.
We'll collect some data.
Okay.
Around this issue, because this is the first so-called shed that Grace has constructed in this area, there are other things that he's done, we'll collect that information for you.
Yeah, I can.
And, well, and, I think in Gatlinburg...
Sevier County.
Sevier County.
Okay, and I'm not disputing that, but it's just, until we, we have concrete evidence that it's opposite of what our county employees, inspectors, have come back and reported, well then we're calling them liars, you know, so if we've got the evidence, that's one thing, but if we don't, we're, we're in a hypothetical situation here, and there's really no where you can go with it, in my opinion. Austin, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had asked for this to be put on the agenda for last meeting, which has rolled into this meeting. I just wanna clarify, I'm not, I'm not at all calling for the removal of any county employee, I just make sure.
Thank you.
I am not calling for that whatsoever. What I am discussing...
You're good, sorry, side conversation, my bad, I apologize.
What I'm looking at, the way I understood the state law, was that for the zoning office to have that authority, it had to be delegated by the regional planning commission. We have been unable, I have worked with the county clerk, to produce a resolution or anything showing where that delegation took place. Now, I'm gonna cross my items off as I go, Mr. Chairman. You touched on this, Mr. Chairman, about precedent, I believe Stephanie operated under precedent.
Precipitation.
If this delegation took place, I imagine it took place probably before Stephanie and, and maybe Tim were county employees. So, I guess what I wanna discuss is moving forward, so we, we had this issue, where some, I'm not gonna go there. If we have all plats and surveys come before this body, then we have a public meeting, an agenda item, it's advertised in the paper, I feel that at that point, the county has done their best to make everyone aware of what's going on, we have transparency. I also feel this would remove that burden from the zoning office of getting into a situation like this again. I understand the feelings around it, so my personal preference would be that moving forward, and I don't know what the proper action would be, because I don't know that there is a resolution or a meeting where this delegation ever took place. So, I'm happy to offer a motion, but I feel that all plats and surveys should come to the regional planning commission.
Before you do, if you don't mind me, just talking to...
Certainly.
I, I think that we're sitting here two hours and forty minutes in, and I don't know, Stephanie, on a typical month, how many of those you may handle, or the office may handle, I'd say it varies, and we're on the same page, it's been past practice. Before we, in my opinion, I would like to look at this, before we go to doing stuff like that, there's time restraints that's gonna be put into place, on people trying to move property, trying to do things. Tom Carter spoke to this, he said he would be more than happy to get involved in the conversation, on making some of these things happen. I just think, before we entertain this, it would be nice to have maybe that included in the workshop that we do, and talk about these things a little bit more. I think we're gonna, again, make things a whole lot harder on our citizens to do what they need to get done, by looking at every single two plat tract that comes in here. And I, I think that's some freedom, especially if it's common practice in other places, and it's even went to the point in other places to where it can be a higher number of plats, am I correct? Did you say five a minute ago? So I mean...
Two and twenty-five.
Two and twenty-five. Twenty-five. Two and twenty-five. Twenty-five. So for us to, to try to reel that back in and make it more cumbersome, I think we're doing a disservice. And again, to throw the baby out with the bathwater from one issue in twenty-seven years that we have on record. There may have been more, but none of us know it. Same as none of us know when it got delegated to that office.
But Brian, it could happen in the future again. I mean, you know-
And that's why I said we may have a-
I think, I think his proposal makes sense. It could happen in the future.
And he, he-
And we should prevent that from happening. We, we don't want people that work in a zoning office to make decisions for this, you know, for this board.
Catherine, I think you wanna speak something.
Well, she, so your decision is, is in establishing the rules and regulations of the subdivision regulations. That is the planning commission's authority and responsibility. The only thing the staff does is, is determine, are you complying with that or not? They also cannot grant a variance. So if someone wants a setback variance, they can't do, you can't do that. If the, she can only approve a plat that is in total compliance with the subdivision regulations. The criteria, which is established by this body. So she's just determining compliance. You would be doing the same thing if it came here, because you wouldn't have the authority to deny that. And I think we've already cleared up the issue of the signature of, it is, the language is the duly elected secretary, duly elected by the planning commission. And that is the individual who is not here tonight. So she does have to sign all documents, including your minutes should be. But you, you're, she's not usurping your authority. Your authority is to create the criteria for the subdivision of property. She's just checking boxes.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned we're two hours and forty minutes into this. I see Mr. Bolton peeking around the corner. I think he's getting, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
He's the one reminding me.
I've heard what you said. We have noted that moving forward, all plats would need the secretary from this body's signature. Correct?
Yes, I think we're all in agreement on that.
I will offer a motion to postpone this agenda item to next month. Whatever the pleasure of the committee is, to postpone this item, that'll give a month to think about the good and the bad.
Absolutely.
And, and then maybe we can come back and have a clearer opinion on this matter, whether this would be good or bad. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to postpone item F until the April meeting.
We have a proper motion. We have second, we have second. Any further discussion on-
Mr. Chairman, I have warned Mr. Bales once already.
Okay, I'll second it or I'll send it.
No, he, he did second it.
I'll go second too if I could.
Just take it off a red, dude.
Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. To postpone this for next month, do a little more reading, a little more looking, talk to the folks where you live, talk to some real estate agents, talk with Stephanie, talk with Tim if you can. And let's come back and have a, a good discussion about this thing next month. All those in favor of postponement, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, both passes. Now, discussion of land use plan and possible rezoning of Jefferson County. I'll entertain a motion.
Is that Austin again?
Mr. Chairman, I, I did, I did not put this one on. I would actually ask, because we're having a lot of in-depth discussion, I would argue that perhaps we're already doing this.
I think we are to a degree as well.
I feel it would be appropriate, I don't know that we need this on our agenda reoccurring each month. So I would, I guess we have to dispose of this item. I guess I will move to postpone this item indefinitely.
Parliamentarily, I think that is proper. So I'll entertain a second for that. A second, any more discussion for postponing indefinitely?
I think Ms. Catherine-
If she can't vote to.
Go ahead.
This is discussion, after you get a motion, a second.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I've asked the county mayor is, looking at your zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance does need work.
Absolutely.
I was just looking at your R1 AR or A1, R1, R2. There's almost no difference between the three of them. You don't have enough zone districts to properly manage growth in your county. I think there's a lot of, your zoning ordinance is very dated. You do need some performance criteria that's in there. The one thing that I had introduced for the C3 zone district was the conditional use about value added processing. And, and you don't use conditional uses. So there's a lot of tools that are out there to regulate land that you're not utilizing. And apparently they were never presented as options for you. So I had asked the mayor to, if there was a committee of a number of different people from different backgrounds to come. So I have a, a meeting in Newport at three o'clock on the fourth Tuesday of every month and establish a committee meeting where we could start looking at your zoning ordinance. And it wouldn't just be planning commission members, it would be anyone that wants to, county commissioners. I think the day, the, what they started off with was the short-term rental ordinance or resolution that I presented here. It got set up the line. And so we're working on that. And there was a meeting this morning at nine o'clock for that. And then next month, I think it's at twelve.
Yes.
Twelve. So I was talking to one of the commissioners about, once we do this with the short-term rental, is that we could move on to the zoning ordinance. And this stuff needs to be vetted, not at nine o'clock, because this is not whiz-bang stuff. It's not something you sit at at nine o'clock without your eyes glazed over going, man, can we just get through it? I, I wanna go home. That goes for me too. So I think if we have a committee that would meet on that fourth Tuesday and, and have some interest from various backgrounds, we could start looking at each individual zone district. And that way we could do a, a good overview. Land use plans, if you don't have a zone district to use that's efficient and effective, there's no reason to look at land use. You don't have a, I mean, you could talk all day about land use. If you don't have a zone district to do, serve as a tool to implement what your goal is, you've just wasted a lot of time. So let's, let's do take that off. But as we go through the next, you know, for, I guess for the foreseeable future, we deal with that issue and then we move on to look at your zoning ordinance as a whole.
Absolutely. I think it's great. Let's see, we're still under discussion.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I would still prefer to not have this reoccur on our agenda moving forward. And whatever we do decide to discuss for that meeting, that it be specific. That way the public could be something they're interested in, could be something they're not. They can make the decision for themselves whether they need to be at the meeting to speak on whatever we're discussing. So in the interest of transparency, I would like to do away with this as it is very broad. So I would, I believe I've got a motion and Mr. Bales has seconded, goodness, several motions.
It's the time.
And we're making light of that, but folks, I don't want you to ever think we're, we're trying to wrestle something just to take a town. All these issues are, are serious issues and we want to do the best job we can for the county. And with that said, Randy, you got something?
It's like you said, we're doing, we're painting this with a very broad paintbrush, so we don't need to be done there. We need to dress like-
Catherine.
Madam.
Madam Flatter.
We need to dress each one of them instead of trying to collect it all up in one big conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Get the A1 first, R1, then, then go to each one of them. And I agree with that whole part, and I agree with postponing.
Careful.
Yeah, well, we can have, we'll bring, does that, we'll bring in a case for a huge town or a many huge town. And I like to take the whole town out and get a whole business.
One step at a time. And I agree with that.
Any further discussion? Being the, all in favor of postponing indefinitely, Adam G., let's acknowledge my standing.